Okay, I guess we'll call this odd Hayesville Planning Commission meeting to order. The first item of business is the roll call.
Okay, Franken, here. Weddington.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Plummer.
Here.
Asia.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Green, Welk, Hatcher. Someone, but they're not here.
That's everybody. Okay, item three, have the presentation approval of minutes of February 13th, 2020.
About to you. Are there any questions on the new?
On the first page, the address, let me see where it is. There was an address and it was supposed to be West something and it, you left the T off. Oh, the, under special order of business.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, second line at the end.
Are you ready?
Was that the only thing you found, Deb?
Yep.
Okay. Then yeah, a motion would be appropriate.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 13th meeting as presented.
Or as corrected?
As corrected, yeah.
Who was the second?
Bob.
Okay, so I have a motion in second to approve.
Second.
Of a motion in second to approve, as corrected, all in favor. Angie, how do you want to do that? You want to do roll call again, so it's not.
Yeah.
Same time?
I will do that. Franken.
Um.
You want to state?
Yeah.
Weddington.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Plummer.
Yes.
Asia.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Under new business, we have COA in 2020 dash 14, conditional use for utility major Southern Star Gas, Central Gas Pipeline. Angie, you want to present that?
I will go ahead and let the MAPD representative take that.
Okay.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. I'm Matt Williams. I'm a planner in the MAPD. I do have a little presentation. I could try to share my screens or if everybody's comfortable with their copy of the staff report, I can do that.
Excuse me, I need to break in for a second. There's someone who came in on the phone and they don't know who the person is.
I don't know who we're missing, Angie.
There's a phone number up here of someone.
I'm not sure. Whoever has phone number 316-598694.
That's Seth Turner. I work with Southern Star out of the Hazel office. I'm just listening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Matt.
Okay, I'm gonna attempt to share my screen if that's okay.
Good luck. Go for it.
Here we go, let's see. Okay, can people see that?
It's working.
Okay, this case is conditionally used 2020 number 14. This is a request for utility major on land that is zoned rural residential and general industrial. This is generally located east of South Meridian and one quarter mile south of West 87th Street. So the applicant filed this request to bring the Southern Star Pipeline property into zoning compliance to get building permits to construct a new storage building on the property. And it was then realized that the current uses that were on the site were not in compliance with the zoning code. So they are applying for this conditional use. The site has previously been used as a gas processing plant. It's currently being used for vehicle and equipment storage in the old compressor building, a pig launch for cleaning pipelines, metering and outside storage and a communications tower. These activities can be classified in the unified zoning as a utility major and they can be authorized by conditional use in the rural residential and general industrial zoning. The properties surrounding this site are all zoned rural residential and have a mix of homes and agriculture uses. If I scroll down here and show you the zoning of the property, you can see that, you know, the green is the rural residential and in the interior part of the site is zone general industrial. Basically, in 1966, MAPD approved the rezoning of the site to the heavy industrial except for a 300-foot perimeter that they kept rural residential. The site has not been platted. Activities taking place on the site have outgrown the area with the industrial zoning and therefore non-conforming. The Wichita Sargent County Comprehensive Plan identifies the site in the 2014 growth area and as an expansion of an existing gas facility, it would simply be continuing the same use that was there before, but on a slightly different scale, but in conformance with our current standards. So based on this, the Metropolitan Area Planning Department has recommended that the request be approved subject to a few conditions in your staff report. Those do include that screening shall be provided on all sides of the property and the site is to be developed as shown on their site plan. So going through these slides, this is the newest site plan I got. This shows the uses that are taking place on the site and it also kind of anticipates some future uses. I might let the applicant talk about that a little bit. There is some outdoor storage up here. Let's see here, this is the existing gravel area with the gas regulators. And I believe this is the proposed area for a new building.
Matt, do you want me to hop in now or respond when you're done?
Give me just one second. I can come back to that slide. As you can see, this map shows that it's within the Hayesville zoning area influence. And here are a few photos of the site. This is looking to the northeast. This is looking to the southeast. You can see some of that outdoor storage on the site. Some of the surrounding areas, the homes. This is the entrance to the site and this is the area across the street. This is mainly agriculture. So that's all I have. I'd be happy for the applicant to talk if they'd like.
I will start us off. My name's Rebecca Melius. I'm the engineer associated with this project. I'm with PEC. I'm the agent for the applicant. Lanford is on as our applicant, so if there are specific items that I can't address, I've asked him to join us and have him hop in on any of those things. So the primary hatch area that you see north of the existing pavement is actually just proposed potential drive space for the pipe storage areas with some potential expansion if those needed to expand. On the south side of that existing main drive pavement, the north-south rectangle is a rock pad currently. Thank you. Yep, that's it. And it is proposed to be a temporary tent structure for now with the potential of becoming a full storage structure. The darker hatching to the east there would be an extension of pavement for parking area. So most everything that they're doing is still pretty well within the confines of the areas that are currently developed. As Matt mentioned, that GI zoning really is the core. So this does encroach within that 300 feet on the west edge, though everything else kind of maintains the buffer that was originally established in 66 when the site was developed. I might add, so at this time, we're in agreement with staff comments with one exception. The screening requirement would be very substantial and would be a rather significant challenge. The concerns that we would pose would be, since its establishment in 66, we haven't had any zoning complaints. There's no complaints that we've been aware of or issues from the adjacent owners. All of the residential properties to the north and to the east were plotted in 1985 and then to the south and southeast were in 99 and 2004 respectively. The use that was permitted in 1966 was previously a pressurized facility, so it had some noise associated. That use has since stopped and it is primarily office and storage type uses, so it is a much smaller of a use. And then another, the big concern really for every side being adjacent to Meridian could cause some site issues for the large trucks that are coming in. We would be concerned with doing any significant screening adjacent to Meridian that would maybe cause some issues there. So other than that, we would stand for any questions you might have.
Okay, does anybody from Planning Commission have questions for the applicant?
Are all of those houses near there on well water?
That I do not know. I know that they are all on lagoons.
Yeah, I think they have to be. We're not certain through the city, are we, Angie?
No.
They almost have to be on well water.
But I believe they're still not even in city limits. They're in unincorporated area. Is that correct?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, I wasn't sure since their, their current use, you know, obviously wouldn't cause any risk to nearby walls or anything like that, but if we change the zoning, is there a potential that they couldn't?
I would keep in mind, this is not a change of zoning. This is just an allowed use within the current zoning parameters.
And approving this conditional use would only allow them to do what's specified on that site plan. So if they ever wanted to change anything, they'd have to come back and go through this process again.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure, you know, being right next to houses on well water and it's an industrial facility.
And this is Greg with Southern Star. I think that's accurately presented. You know, I think, you know, in the past, this was, as she said, a compressor station where we pressurize gas to move it down the system. However, over the last 20 or 30 years, this has simply been an office. We do have some facilities there, but they are not pressurized or they're not a compression unit as it used to be. So it's simply pretty much an office with some regulation and then we look to utilize it for some storage with this new structure.
So how does this conditional use affect that 300-foot barrier around the whole that was put in in 66?
So this would be an encroachment in that west 300-foot barrier. The northeast and south 300-foot barriers are still maintained.
And the west is the one that's up against.
Meridian, yes sir.
Just want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Thank you.
So my only real concern is if you're going to use this for increased storage and materials, we have no way to regulate that. And if you're not willing to put up any kind of screening against any of the other walls, we have no way of protecting any of those homeowners from having to look at what could become a pile of rusty pipe or literally anything else. So I guess at some point, we need to decide whether the applicants, you know, unwillingness to screen the site is enough for us to say, well, maybe this isn't something we would approve. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, the, the biggest part of the screening that gives us heartburn is along Meridian. We just think from a safety perspective that that's the part that does give us some concern.
I agree with you. If you're storing stuff there and you're blocking it off, somebody gets in there and steals, you're driving by a meridian and you can't see. That's not the part of the screening that I'm concerned about.
And I think that we would be willing to screen the other sides if needed. I think there is a lot of privacy fences there existing.
Is there? Well, and I know that a lot of people have lagoons at the very back of their probably property that's separating them also, but I can't tell from the area whether everybody has a lagoon between them and your property.
And I may be able to ask Seth that stepped in. He works out of that location, so he would have a better idea of the screening that's existing at that facility.
And to be clear, what kind of screening are we talking about? What are you guys considering?
So per the zoning code, it varies. I mean, it could be an eight-foot masonry wall. It could be landscaping. It just, it has to protect the residential properties. So that's part of it is because there's such a broad capability for what it could be, some recommendations that would be helpful as well, some direction of what would be acceptable. Be helpful. There is pretty heavy tree row on the north, but on the south and east, it's mostly just the privacy fences and things.
So if you've got a six or eight-foot chain link all the way around the property, is that correct? So would you be willing to put the plastic strips that go in the existing chain link around the three sides that are adjacent to the houses? In lieu of a masonry or?
Greg, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think if needed, that we could accommodate that. It would be that or something of similar. You know, I know that stuff's very hard to maintain, so I don't know if they have some other type of screening that we could put up against the chain link. But I think if needed, you know, and that's what we would have to do, then I think we could accommodate the three sides excluding Meridian. But we would need to, I would like some flexibility in the material. But it would be either the slats that go through the chain link and/or some type of perimeter that can be affixed to the chain link to serve the same purpose.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to hear other opinions on it. I'm throwing out the chain link idea because I know it's more cost-effective than having to put up a masonry fence, obviously, but I haven't heard any other opinions as to whether that's adequate, appropriate, or even necessary. I may be the only one that thinks it's even necessary at all, so. Deb, you're muted.
I think that the reason we pushed for, we pushed for the non-screening was just because of the timeframe that we've been there and, and, you know, the lack of complaints to our facility of concern.
Yeah, and I understand.
I understand where you're coming from.
All those, all those houses came after you were there and they knew it was there when they built their house. That part I get. But where I'm getting hung up is if you're planning on using that as storage right now, you're using a little bit of storage on Meridian, but you'll have the ability to store whatever and however you want in the middle of that property. And we have no way after this process, go back and protect all those homeowners. I don't have any idea that you're going to try and make this a dump or a trash heap or whatever, but this is our only opportunity to protect any of those homeowners. So if, if we have to take a step to say, okay, well, I would at least like to have that screened since it's just a chain link fence, then I think we have to at least discuss it. Deb, did you have a comment?
Yes. Angie, the homeowners surrounding this property have been notified, right?
Matt, do you want to talk about that?
The, you know, that's a good question. I don't believe they've been notified yet. Simply because, you know, the way this COVID-19 has gone. I was telling the applicant earlier today, we're working on putting our schedule together. I think this case is going to be heard June 4th. So our letters that will go out to the property owner are in the next few weeks, but I'm not sure if they got sent one. I don't believe they got sent one in the first place and then were told that the meeting was canceled. I don't think a letter has gone out yet, but they were. I'm sorry.
It's not a public hearing. Just the recommendation. The public hearing would be held.
Hazel Planning Commission tonight. That's correct. Yeah, Hayesville Planning Commission's making a recommendation to the MAPD.
And that's where the public hearing would be?
Yeah, correct, yes.
Hey, this is Seth. Can I say something real quick? I'm the manager of that facility and the center of that, everything east and north of that building is a swamp. We spend a lot of time cleaning that junk pile up and we're going to get rid of some of the racks on the north end to clean it up. It is merely going to be a safety. We're not going to make it a dump. We can't. It's, we're centralizing our warehouse so that they can come in and utilize it for projects. But the majority of that property, water, you can't drive a vehicle out in it. It's unusable without major hauling a lot of dirt and stuff like that in there. So everything's going to be up front for quick and easy access to get them out of the facility. And we are on well water and we have a septic system that you can see in Google Earth that goes out to the southwest of the building. You can see the scarring. So that's the extent of our facilities in there.
Well, at this point, we don't have a public hearing. I would like to hear from the homeowners that actually are adjacent to this. I would like to make a recommendation that this be approved with some conditions. I am willing to be flexible on the screening if the properties around there are also okay with that. And I don't know how to properly articulate that at this point. Without having our own public hearing and hearing from the public or having any input from anybody that is adjacent to that, I don't think I'm willing to do away with the screening requirement completely. But we can kick it up to the next level and recommend approval, still recommend a consideration for screening and let it get decided at that point. You guys were okay with all of the other requirements that were recommended?
Correct, yeah, that we would be in compliance with that site plan. I would potentially offer back, if you're concerned with an expansion of storage area and you heard, you know, the areas are rather sturdy and so not likely to potential to grow, we could add a boundary on that site plan to say the limits of the storage area. If ever they were to be out of compliance with that, then the additional screening would be required. Would that be?
Yeah, so. Yeah, Rebecca explained that part to me. You've got that 300-foot buffer that was, that's been there since 66 and they can't store anything in that 300-foot now, correct?
Well, they're not supposed to be, but they are, and that is what triggered.
Which is why we're here, yes.
Correct.
And we are allowing it along Meridian, which is what we're considering right now, is allowing it along Meridian. And I guess we could write into our recommendation that if you are adjacent to or within that 300-foot, you've got to screen that side for, I don't know, an entire lot or however you want to word it. You know, that's the other thing is where we were going through that 300-foot to the, to the north, you're getting next to your next neighbor right there and we're saying we don't have to screen. Well, that'd be the one place where you probably should screen, even if you don't go along the back wall where it, they're what?
1400 feet.
1400 feet, yeah. I was gonna say, you're filling in my math, so.
I think we would be happy to, I think we would be happy to screen the north, north line. And I think, like you said, that's probably the most exposure to the actual residents.
Yeah, so with us doing this, would we, would we potentially be allowing for you to go into that 300-foot anywhere around? Or are we just allowing this one location?
That's a question for Matt, I believe, because this, all of these are conditional upon that site plan and that site plan shows the conditions as they are today. So my interpretation would be that approval of this would be that the storage as it is today could remain in place. And then, like I said, we could potentially even add on to the limits of where that drive area are on the proposed area. You know, we could say the screening requirements are just for that north edge to protect the residences. If any storage were to expand, additional screening requirements would be required at that time or some kind of.
Yeah, I think that's where I was gonna go with it was, yeah, I think that's where I was gonna go with it was if, if you exceed that 300-foot spacing anywhere, that would trigger a need for screening against, and maybe not the whole side, but a, I don't know how to make that an appropriate length of depending on what you're storing there, but I think that's, if I could properly articulate it, that's where I think I'm headed. And I, Greg, it sounds like you are agreeable to that, at least in strokes.
Yeah, and I think, I think that has some justification and, you know, I think like she said, you know, we don't have the intent to expand any further than what we have in the, in the site plan. We've looked to try to have that for any, to cover any potential future. You know, the always structure that we have proposed, that we wouldn't have to come back and get another permit with you guys would be the one that we have in the site plan. So I think it accurately depicts what we have in future plans.
Okay. Well, I'm definitely open for more discussion, but I think the recommendation that I would like to make is that we approve with the conditions, but limit the screening to half of a side that is, is that agreeable to you, Greg? Half?
Yes, sir.
Half of a side.
I think that's.
Where adjacent to exceeds the 300 feet. So if you get into the back half of the north side, you gotta go back and get it also.
Yeah, so that, so that basically means as long as we stay along Meridian like we have planned, we need, we need to do half of the north side.
Yeah, and.
Okay.
I want to adjust that, that recommendation also to not require screening along Meridian. And that's probably worth a bit of discussion also from the rest of the Planning Commission, if anybody has thoughts on the screening along Meridian.
I don't want to see screening along Meridian.
Does everybody else feel the same way?
I agree.
It either.
Okay, and is this dedicating an extra 10 feet? Or is that already dedicated?
With the plaque?
Yeah, is that next, actually? Am I jumping ahead?
That's next.
Disregard. Okay, so I think I kind of made a motion for a recommendation, if there's a second.
All second.
Thank you, Bob. I have a motion in second for approval based on.
Can I clarify that?
Sure.
So you're recommending approval with the conditions, but limiting the screening to the half of the north side, basically?
Half of any side where you exceed the 300-foot open gap.
Okay, in this case, because we have plan and they have to come back to update the site plan if they wanted to put that outside storage somewhere else, I would say just the north, just the half of the north side makes sense to me, if that's okay.
Sorry, say that again?
Just because on their site plan, this approval is based on the site plan and they're only showing it on that portion north and along Meridian, I would recommend that we just say that it's on the half of the north side. If that's all right.
That would be the west half of the north side, correct? Because that's where the encroachment is.
Correct.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
We're limiting for this, so if your site plan, say, next year you come back and you want to throw another row of pipe on the back half of the north line, row of pipe on the back half of the north line, that would trigger what we were talking about before, we don't want to write that into this recommendation right now?
We would have to come back with a new conditional use permit.
Okay, correct, understood.
Or modifications to the site plan.
Okay, good. So I have a motion in second to recommend approval and limit the screening to just the northwest, the west half of the north line for screening and omitting it for all other sides, including Meridian. So Bob, do you still second that?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion in second. Angie, would you do a roll call?
Franken?
Hi.
Coleman?
Hi.
Weddington?
Hi.
Williams?
Hi.
Plummer?
Hi.
Yes. Okay, item B, preliminary and final plat for Southern Star addition to Sedgwick County, Kansas. Angie, you want to present, or?
I'm just pulling it up. No, we can do this. I did send out to the utilities and the different reviewing bodies. I only received one comment back stating that no additional easements were needed. I'm not sure, Rebecca, did you hear back from the county on the drainage?
I have not, no, but we'll pursue with Scott.
So according to the subdivision regulations, I wasn't sure if you wanted to specify where you wanted those access controls put.
There's nothing across the street now. It's only farms fields now?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. Seth, can you verify that?
I'm looking.
West Southern Meridian, there's nothing there.
So this means the one access opening you currently have is going to stay where it's at, I'm assuming?
Yes, sir.
And then we're going to allow you another one without any kind of restriction. I would say we should consider at least a 300-foot spacing. What's your frontage? Does somebody know? It's on there, 1,200 feet?
1,300 feet. I might interrupt really quick. If you look at the site plan from the conditional use case, there is a proposed second drive to the north where that gravel driveway would tie in with Meridian. To give you an idea of what's being considered right now.
So it would be in that general vicinity. You know, I think within 300 feet of that, that general vicinity would be pretty accurate.
We could easily make a comment that there needs to be 300 foot between the two openings and modify the language on the face of the plat.
Well, everywhere else in town, that would be our standardized spacing. I think out there, it probably doesn't matter now, but it could in the future, and I'd hate to, I'd hate to end up putting two drives 60 foot apart and just because we weren't smart enough to consider what might happen. So as long as that 300-foot works out with what you guys were doing in the first place, I can't find it on the site plan because I don't know if I'm looking at the wrong one.
I don't know if you, actually, I don't know if you have the new copy of what Matt showed in the presentation. I apologize.
Okay.
So, but yes, we will modify the language, so we'll have the complete access control except two openings with 300-foot separation.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
No.
We are dedicated. It will be a 60-foot right away, just to answer.
Our standard half-street.
That drive right now with the gate shaft that we would make accessible is 530 feet from the center line of the existing drive. So there will be plenty of space in between them.
Is that to the north?
Yes, it's approximately from the center of the drive, 535 feet to the middle of that gate.
And then could you tell me just by eyeballing it, about how far are you away from that, your neighbor's northern drive? Your north neighbor's southern drive?
It is 303 feet approximately from the center line of that south drive.
If it was 297, would you still tell me it was 303?
I'm measuring right now in Google Earth Pro. It's 303 feet from the center line.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Anybody have a motion then?
I would make that motion.
Is your motion to approve the preliminary and final plat as presented with the comments of dry spacing that we discussed?
Correct.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Deb. We have a motion in second to approve the preliminary and final plat as presented with the dry spacing correction that we have been discussing. Angie, you want to do a roll call?
Franken?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, Coleman?
Hi.
Weddington?
Yes.
Hi.
Williams?
Yes.
Plummer?
Yes.
And Asia?
Yes. So no old business, no correspondence, informational reading? Are there any committee updates? Okay.
None here.
Any off agenda items?
No.
No.
Then item nine.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I have a motion second to adjourn. I think we can just do this one all at once. All in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Thank you all so much.